We are recording.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the appellate court. The next matter that we're going to be hearing is 2772 BPR versus Town of North Branford, Planning and Zoning Commission, AC number 42866. We are conducting this hearing on the Microsoft Teams platform. The first order of business is to introduce ourselves, make sure that we can all hear and see each other. So we'll begin with the judges and then counsel. I'm Judge Prescott.
I'm Judge Torres.
I'm Judge Vitale.
Good morning, Your Honor. I'm Jeffrey Beatty. I'm counsel for the plaintiff 2772 BPR LLC. I can hear and see you all.
Good morning, Your Honors. I am Barbara Schellenberg, representing the defendant North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Counsel should have received the instructions regarding the manner in which we're conducting this hearing. Please let me know if you have any questions about them. This argument is being livestreamed on YouTube so that the public may view it. I don't think it applies in this case, but if there happened to be any statutory or confidential matters that should not disclose publicly, please do your best not to do so. Each side will have 20 minutes for argument. If the appellant wishes to reserve any portion of that 20 minutes for rebuttal time, please let me know when your argument begins. Important to keep your microphone muted when you're not talking. That applies to both judges and counsel so that we avoid background noise. But please keep your video camera on at all times. That's our way of knowing that you are still online and participating. If you were to happen to drop off, we would stop the argument and wait for you to try and reconnect with us. So with that, Attorney Beatty, you're up. And I'll just tell you, counsel, that I'll hold up these very low-tech signs when you're running out of time.
Thank you, Your Honors. Again, my name is Jeffrey Beatty. I'm the attorney for the plaintiff 2772 BPR LLC. I would like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal, if I may, at the beginning of my argument. Thank you. Your Honor, the Town of North Branford amended its regulations in August of 2014 to permit the bulk storage of propane on properties south of Route 80 and east of Ciro Road as of right, subject only to site plan approval, administrative approval of a site development plan application. So the bulk storage of propane on the subject property at 40 Ciro Road was a permitted right, permitted use as of right, following the adoption of this amendment to the planning and zoning regulations. The amendment became effective on September 5th of 2014, and on September 5th of 2014, my client submitted a site development plan application to the Town of North Branford to have its proposed bulk storage facility consisting of two 30,000-gallon propane tanks and office, garage, fencing, all that type of thing approved for this site. A public hearing was scheduled, but prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission acting on the application, we needed to get inland wetlands review of the application because there were some inland wetlands on the property that weren't going to be impacted by the proposed development, but it was in the upland review area. The members of the North Branford Inland Wetlands Commission, several of them recused themselves, and we needed to go to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to get that approval. That process took about two years. And so while the application was submitted in 2014 and the public hearing started in 2014 before the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was tabled until we received approval from the DEEP in 2017. The public hearing then continued in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in March of 2017, and at that point, they welcomed comment from the public, a large number of whom showed up to express their hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission would deny the application. At that hearing, we presented our expert testimony with regard to what we were proposing to build, fire safety protocols, and things of that nature. And then the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission, closed the public hearing. Prior to closing it, I submitted to the commission a letter in which I recited that under TLC versus Branford, the Planning and Zoning Commission, because it had adopted amendments which permitted this use as of right and subject only to administrative approval of a site development plan application, that they were precluded from considering things that were, under the TLC holding and its progeny, things like whether or not it complied with the plan of development, whether or not it was going to have an impact on property values, and off-site traffic concerns unless the regulation specifically provided for limited review with regard to the site. Following the close of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted three to two to deny the application. And the grounds that they gave for the denial, the first, they gave three grounds. The first was that the site plan was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan of development. The second was that the neighborhood was a neighborhood consideration, that the proposed use was unable to protect property values in the neighborhood. And the third was that the road was on a dead, the Ciro Road where the property is located was a dead-end road, and that if there were an emergency, access would be limited because there was only one way in and one way out of the site. We appealed that decision to the Superior Court on the grounds that those, our argument being that the grounds given by the Planning and Zoning Commission were not supportive, were not available to them because this was a use permitted as of right under the zoning regulations, and under TLC, the commission was precluded from considering precisely the grounds that it relied upon, that it didn't comply with a comprehensive plan of development, that it didn't, that it was going to negatively impact property values, and that there were concerns with regard to access to the area in the event of an emergency. Because our argument, our argument was because it was a use permitted as of right, there's a conclusive presumption under TLC that the use complies with the comprehensive plan of development, that it's not going to have a negative impact on property values, and that there are no off-site traffic concerns that the Planning and Zoning Commission could have considered when making a decision on this application. Not only that, but TLC holds that the, they're not permitted, and subsequent cases hold, that they're not permitted to make inquiry into whether it complies with the comprehensive plan of development, whether it will have a negative impact on property values, or what traffic implications there may be, other than site-specific implications primarily related to ingress and egress to the site or internal traffic on the site. Again, the grounds given by the town weren't site-specific. It was access to the area in the event there was an emergency at the site because of the proposed use. In her memorandum of decision, Judge Richards upheld the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission on the ruling that the Friedman versus Rocky Hill case provided the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at these criteria and to consider whether or not it complied with a comprehensive plan of development, whether or not it had a negative impact on property values and emergency access. I should point out that at the public hearing, both the fire marshal and the fire chief for the Town of North Branford submitted memoranda saying that they were comfortable that they would be able to address an emergency should one arise at the site, and the zoning enforcement officer and the town planner both submitted memoranda to the Planning and Zoning Commission stating that the application complied with all of the requirements of the Town of North Branford's zoning regulations. The, so our argument, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Friedman appears to permit some use of traffic studies and traffic information when that's site-specific. Is not the kind of concern about the kind of the dead-end nature of this road a site-specific concern?
I don't believe it is, Your Honor, and that's because the road was a dead-end road at the time that the regulations were amended to permit this use. And the table of uses that's attached to the planning and zoning regulation says that this use is permitted on properties south of Ciro, south of Route 80 and east of Ciro Road. So the commission, when it adopted the regulations, anticipated that this was a neighborhood where this type of use would be permitted. And so they may, they may be, but to get more directly answer your question, they're allowed to require that, or do that type of investigation if the regulations say that that's what they want. So in Friedman, for example, the regulations were amended to require an applicant to submit a traffic study showing ingress and egress to the property. The appellant in the Friedman case said, "Under TLC, I don't need to give you that information. It's a permitted use. I don't need to give you the traffic study." Friedman's holding was that if the regulations permit or require an applicant to submit a traffic study, then they have to submit the traffic study, and the commission can look at that as a reason. But again, it's specific to ingress and egress to the site. How do you get onto the property? How do you get off the property? Not the, and the reason, not the area as a whole. And the reason given for the Planning and Zoning Commission in its denial was that the Ciro Road is a dead-end street which limits access both in and out of the area during an emergency. That's a much broader area than just the site itself. And I would argue that that street was a dead-end road at the time that the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted the regulations that permitted this use. Presumably, and that's the conclusive presumption of TLC, presumably, the Planning and Zoning Commission was aware that Ciro Road was a dead-end road when it adopted the regulations that permitted this use as of right within this part of town. So our argument is that this was a use permitted as of right. We satisfied the requirements of the zoning regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission was precluded from reviewing, from considering these off-site issues, namely whether or not it complied with a comprehensive plan of development. It necessarily had to comply with a comprehensive plan of development in order for the regulations to be amended to permit this use in the first place, or there's a conclusive presumption that it complied with a comprehensive plan of development when the Town Planning and Zoning Commission amended its regulation to permit this use. The impact on property values was presumably considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission when it amended the regulations to permit this use, and the access to it, again, it's a dead-end street, was something that the commission should have been aware of when it amended the regulations to allow this use. The, most recently, this court in the American Institute of Neurointegrative Development recited that because the designation of a particular use of property as a permitted use establishes a conclusive presumption that such use does not adversely affect the district and precludes further inquiries into its effect on traffic, municipal services, property values, or the general harmony of the district. And so, under that TLC law, TLC decision and its progeny, most recently, recited in this court's decision in American Institute for Neurointegrative Development, we feel that the commission acted improperly when it denied the application on this grounds, and that Judge Richards, in her opinion, allowed the commission to review criteria that were beyond the scope of what they were legally entitled to review. And for those reasons, we ask that the decision of Judge Richards be reversed, and correspondingly, the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission be reserved, reversed with instructions to approve our application.
All right. Thank you. Attorney Schellenberg.
Yes. Good morning. May it please the court. My name is Barbara Schellenberg, and I represent the defendant, Town of North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission. Your honors, the commission was obligated to apply its regulations and did so properly in this case. Until the commission was presented with a site plan application, it could not evaluate site-specific issues such as emergency access for this particular piece of property, which Section 41.2 of the regulations specifically addressed. This, in this case, the record demonstrated that there was only one entrance and exit onto this particular piece of property from a dead-end road, which clearly caused the commission great concern considering the type of use proposed.
But Attorney Schellenberg, they knew this when they decided that this area could have large propane storage tanks, and they knew it was a dead-end road.
They knew it was a dead-end road, Your Honor, but they had not yet been presented with a site plan for this specific piece of property, which showed only one entrance to and from the property. So access became an issue, and access is one of the things that is...
Can I, can I press you on that a little bit?
Of course.
When you say only one access, you're talking about because it's a, it's a dead-end street, right? Not, not access on the property itself.
No, it was access on the property itself. That, that's my understanding from, there was colloquy, which I cited in my brief, between one of the commissioners and the plaintiff's engineer on that very issue. There was one, only, only one entrance to and from the property. So in other words, there was no other access from Ciro Road or any other road onto the property or off the property. So the concern was about emergency access in case there would be a major emergency, which...
So let me just see if I understand what you're saying. So the commission's concern about the property was, you're saying, was not the fact that this was a dead-end street, but when you get to the portion of the, of the dead-end street on which this property is, that there was only one entrance to and from that parcel?
Correct. Obviously, in combination with the fact that it was a dead-end road. But my point is, until they have a site plan showing the specific entrances and exits, they, they can't evaluate this specific site.
So, so you're saying that if, let's say, the frontage of this particular parcel on this dead-end street was, was, I don't know what it is in reality, but let's say it was 2,000 feet of frontage on, onto this street. If they had a kind of a driveway in and a driveway out, it's a different case?
It might have been. We don't know. But, but the, but the point is that if you look at...
Were there any discussions between the applicant and the commission about conditions that the site plan application be modified to provide an additional means of in and egress from the property itself to the dead-end street?
Well, there was a discussion, again, which I cited in my brief. If you just indulge me for a moment.
Sure.
I'll, I'll address that specifically. It starts on the bottom of page two, and it's a discussion between one of the commissioners, Commissioner Lescovich, and she says, the other thing, she's talking to now to the plaintiff's engineer. She says, "The other thing was on the site plan, the question came up, and that would be for the architect. There's one entrance and exit on Ciro Road." Right. And the engineer responds, "That's correct." And Commissioner Lescovich says, "Okay, so if Ciro Road has such a backup and we don't have any other way of in and out, how would you suggest that this is safe?" And the engineer responds, "One of the questions," and I know I'm not supposed to be answering the questions, but one of the questions that came up had to do with why there was not a traffic study done as part of our application." And then he talks about how we took a look at it. And the commissioner answers, "But this is above a traffic study. This was the congestion on the road that the emergency vehicles would have to get in and out of, and if the roads are so congested, how are they supposed to get in and out?" And then there was further discussion about this.
But they're talking about Ciro Road there, not the, not the ingress and egress to the property itself. Ms. Lescovich's concern seems to be about backups on Ciro Road because it's a, a dead-end street.
But I believe, Your Honor, that, that the record shows that the concern was certainly that, but in combination with the fact that there was only one entrance and exit from the property. They were the same. In other words, the point of exit, entrance and exit onto the property and out from the property, back onto Ciro Road, were the same. There was no other entrance and exit. I believe that's clear from the record. I don't think I'm mistaken. I believe that's what the site plan shows. So again, the, and if you take a look at Section 41.2 of the regulations, I don't believe that Attorney Beatty is correct when he says that the regulations don't allow for consideration of that issue because 41.2.3 specifically is entitled "access" and says, "Provision shall be made for vehicular access to the lot in such a manner as to safeguard against hazards to traffic and pedestrians in the street and on the lot, and to avoid traffic congestion on any street." And then it goes on...
That's to the lot, not on and off the lot.
I, to, on and off the lot, that, that deals with access from the road to the lot and then from the lot back onto the road. That seems to be clearly what the, what the regulation is addressing there. And I, you know, yes, it's true, the use was permitted as of right, but I think that whenever a commission is addressing a site plan application, it obviously has to take into consideration the use that's being considered. If, for example, let's say this was dealing with a residential home or a commercial building, and there's a fire, that's obviously a dangerous situation. But if you're dealing with an explosion of propane tanks, that's, that's obviously a very different situation and can be catastrophic. And the, the commission was understandably concerned about the ability of volunteer emergency services to access the site in a situation like that. For the first time, the commission had before it evidence, for example, of a valve malfunction at a propane, excuse me, a propane facility in Florida that required evacuation up to almost one mile from the facility. So the commission was presented with a situation where it had to, it had to deal with these kinds of safety concerns.
Frankly, Attorney Schellenberg, this feels like, this feels like zoning by plebiscite to me, that, that the neighbors were concerned about property values, that the town had already made a decision that this was going to be a permitted use of these propane tanks, and whatever dangers they may pose were a permitted use in this zone. And so when there's an actual application, we come up with a lot of excuses not to allow it.
Your Honor, I don't think that's a fair reading of the record. If you take a look at the record here, the transcripts of the hearings before the commission, which took place primarily over three nights, Attorney Beatty was correct, this started back in 2014, but then was delayed a couple of years. So the hearings took place in March of 20, primarily in March of 2017, over three nights. And almost the entire public hearing process was devoted to these issues of safety concerns, including the applicant's presentation. It was, it was focused very much on safety protocols and procedures for this type of use. So I think that highlights the fact that safety was a major issue in this case. And yes, the neighbors were concerned about that. And if you read through that testimony, what you will find is the neighbors' concerns were primarily focused also on these safety issues. So I don't think this was a situation where people were just coming in and saying, "Hey, we, you know, we don't like this. Like, we don't like to live next door to a gas station or a cemetery or something like that." They were raising significant issues. One of the things that was brought to the commission's attention was the fact that the fire chief, notwithstanding saying that, that he felt that an emergency situation could be handled, he had also told, explicitly told residents of a, of a retirement home in a nearby residential community that it was out of the question, that's a quote, "It was out of the question that there could be an evacuation of residents from that retirement community should there be a major emergency at this propane facility." So...
Attorney Schellenberg, even, even the town fire marshal was not concerned with these issues, correct?
Well, but, but as one of the commissioners brought up during deliberations, he was, he was addressing kind of a normal, you know, a situation. Again, I had quoted in my brief where Commissioner Lescovich specifically said during the deliberations, "The police chief has stated that they never had a problem. Well, maybe they didn't have a problem with the ambulance getting down or even a fire truck, but that isn't in a catastrophe where there's a lot more than one fire truck and one ambulance." And actually, the fire marshal and police chief were not there to answer questions. But as she pointed out, if there was a storm or power lines were down, or God forbid, a terrorist attack, which unfortunately, we're dealing with those kinds of things in the world we live in today, there was great concern expressed about the ability of this volunteer emergency service to be able to handle a situation like that. And again, I think that the commission was entitled to consider what type of use was being proposed when they were, when they were reviewing this site plan application. They simply could not ignore that. So I do believe that the record supports the decision reached. The one other matter I would like to comment is on the American Institute for Neurointegrative Development, Inc. case, which was cited in the plaintiff's reply brief. And I don't think that that case is on point because that case dealt with speculative or general concerns about increased traffic, and the testimony of the neighbors specifically contradicted the testimony of the plaintiff's traffic expert. In this case, there was not even a traffic report or any testimony of a traffic expert. And again, we were dealing with a very, very different situation here with a potentially catastrophic situation should there be any type of fire, leak, or explosion, and that was not the situation in, in the American Institute case. If there are no, no further questions, that's, that's all I have for my presentation today.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Beatty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just in rebuttal, there, the, prior to amending the regulations to permit this use as of right, the Planning and Zoning Commission held two public hearings prior to adopting these regulations. At those public hearings, presumably, anyone who was opposed to the introduction of this use at this site would, had an opportunity to come and speak about their concerns. That was enough, and, and, and no one was there. No one did. They, they adopted the regulations, they permitted this as of right. Following the submission of the site plan application, the public speaks in opposition, and the commission said, is thinking, "Maybe we shouldn't have approved this as of right." But they did. And we submitted an application under the regulations that complies with the regulations that allows this use as of right. If, subsequent to this, in fact, while the application was pending, the Town of North Branford amended its zoning regulations to prohibit this type of use going forward, or in any event, in much smaller, much, much smaller capacities. So that, that's the property, proper mechanism that the, the Planning and Zoning Commission had available to it to prevent this type of thing from going, this type of use, if they wanted to prevent it from happening in the future, to prevent it from happening in the future. They don't get the opportunity to say to this applicant, "We're not, we're going to deny you, your, your application because you don't like what you're proposing." But they're proposing is exactly what's permitted under the regulations that they amended to allow this use. Or my client, the, the regulations that were adopted specifically say that the bulk store propane on Parson and south of Route 80 and Ciro Road is a permitted use as of...
Attorney Beatty, two quick, one is that, do you, that there was only one driveway onto the parcel? And were there any discussions about modifying the plan or imposition to approval to driveways?
The answer to your question is... property, so the, and one way out of, there's no discussion at the public, if I, the design, permit, permit, in the property, brought up at all? The planning, public's perspective, and it, acted in the, aisle, dead-end, that made war, if across Ciro Road, be able to get to the, that's different than be able to get into the, there's a branch across, it's the fact that it's a, that was despite the background, why they denied, like to point, the character, the neighborhoods, one of the, of the retirement, of the big, the, where relatives did the reg, permit this use? Are there any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you both for your arguments, well argued. I look forward to seeing you both real courtroom sometime soon, and we'll recess.
We do too, very much.